Okay, it's 6:00 PM Wednesday, September 3rd. We're gathered for our regular Select Board meeting. I'd like to open the meeting with a roll call. Select persons present: Jeff Peters, Josh Tracy, Mike Gould. Employees: Brian Mullis, Michelle Nichols, Kelsey Shannon, Matt Blockler. And Public Present. We'll start with you, Joe. Just announce yourself.
Josh Moore. I'm in the state of Dayton. I work for the Department of the State.
Dennis Campbell.
Eric Dor.
Tom McKinnon.
Tom McKinnon. Okay, we'll start our meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance. Please remove your hats. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first item is open session. Do we have anybody that has an open session discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on. Signing minutes of the board meeting? There are no minutes at this time to sign.
Go ahead. Bad allergy week. Send the orchard half the day today.
And then we've got warrant number 70, which is accounts payable. Okay, moving on. All business. Our first one is the Dale Gray Homestead exemption. And we've invited Josh Moore, our assessing agent, to attend. Josh, the floor is yours.
Um, I don't know where you want me to start. I mean, we had this abatement. My feelings are, at the top of the state auditor, that we really need to think about denying that abatement. The state auditor says, in Pope's law, that if they own the property as tenants in common, they're considered as one ownership. And both properties are owned that same way. Now, if they owned it as tenants in possession, that would mean they only owned half of the property. And when they pass, that half could go to whoever they decide to. Whereas they own it jointly, you know, one passes, the other one takes it up full ownership. And that's how he distinctively different, and he thought the law was obvious. Another thing is, when I was first asked about this, I, you know, the first thing I said was, can we prove that they lived there six months out of the year? I mean, that's one of the requirements.
This discussion came up last year when we talked about this. And there was no building on the lot to live in, is why we, last year we felt confident in declining.
He did inform me that he has a camper on the lot, and he has, like, either in the camper or the structure six months out of this. This is what he said to me.
The law states they have to live there six months out of the year. And if something happens, unfortunate, but the intention is to come back. And I think that he qualifies for that, yes.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not arguing. I just told Dale that I would make sure that what he told me was passed on to this group. And he didn't say that he was there, he has a camper there, and he lives there six months out of the year.
I think we were going under the impression that he wasn't there six months out of last year. But if he was in the camper, I mean, that pretty much says he's wrong. I don't know if he had a camper down there or not. I'm sure he probably did.
All I know is what he told me. I'm just relaying what I was told.
Right. I've talked to a lot assessors, and this is an issue in a lot of towns. And they define it as, do they register their vote at a different address, and do they register their car at a different addresses?
Do we have the answer to that question? All those questions?
Yes, we looked up the registrations, and they both have separate addresses on those registrations.
Same with their voter registration?
Yes.
And their car registrations?
Yep.
So I think we kind of, kind of president, we let them register their cars, and register their vote in different addresses. So that's something to think about when you're making decisions. You know, they've kind of already separated that. It's not part of it. The only thing that you would have to hang on to, if you deny the abatement, was what that state auditor quoted, and they sent it in the letter to you guys, that that law heart, where they own it as joint tenants, I consider it as one entity for taxation. Because the rate for taxation, right, is law. So it's kind of a iffy subject, you know?
Do we got a legal opinion on this as well?
I forwarded that to you.
I interpreted what she wrote as she was kind of in line with the state, with the state auditor said.
I would agree with that.
That was my interpretation of, trying to read the lawyer print.
I would agree that basically what she said paraphrased is just what Josh just said.
I don't know if we have a copy of that. Should we read it if we do?
I will say, I've been through this before in another town, through the proposal county commissioners first. They did approve the two homes there. Now we've got a different county commissioner board. They never did go into Superior Court. But when it's Superior Court, they actually live their life on. And nobody pushed it that far. It's $350, the town probably don't want to expense, you know, going to Superior Court. But it does no expense to go to the county commissioners. That's the bullet size.
Well, do we have to go to county commissioners, or does he have to go to county commissioners?
Uh, he will have to go. I will go to represent the town, and they usually like, they leave one, but when they go to represent the town, you don't have to, no.
Do you feel this is a decision better made at county commissioner level than at town level? Should we excuse ourselves from this and bring somebody else in?
Um, I think it's probably not a bad idea, just with the simple fact is, I think this is going to be a problem who's a bow too. You know, I just got, looked at one today where they have a homestead in the town, got a second home, and now I've got a second homestead application. So I'm on the fence. Do I crew it? Do I, you know? This, I think this will set the precedent for the town. If you let him do it, and you're going to let everybody do it.
Right.
Is that legal? You know, you've called, you've got representation from your lawyers, you know, quoted what I found in the law, from the state auditor, what he sent me. I think you're going to have to make up your own mind on whether you want to move forward with the matter. I think county commissioners would, worth it, would come out of it if they tell you that you had to get the phone, and you had to be with it.
Well, if he's entitled to it, we don't want him to have it.
Yeah.
But, again, the thing you said, this sets precedence for everybody that has two pieces of property in one town. And that's, for me, this is the beginning of where we go with this, and we need to do it right.
To me, the difference between joint tenants and tenants in common is a big, should be a big factor. I mean, tenants in common, like I said, if you die, that other person don't get the whole property, the heirs do. They might end up getting it, don't get me wrong, but that's not the way to be the man. If you expect your spouse to get it when you die, it's not in joint tenants. And the law clearly states, if it's in joint tenants, per taxation, it's one entity. The two people are one entity. That's the idea of becoming joint tenants. So when I die, the wife gets it, or so on. Whoever is joint tenants, who is.
And this is, this is recorded in the deed as joint tenants?
Yes.
On both pieces of property?
Yeah. I think he qualifies for everything else, but that. Because we didn't let him register vehicles into a different address, or register a vote into a different address. The only thing that I see that he qualifies would be the joint tenants.
What is the process if we were to take this to the level of county commissioners? Our commissioners?
Well, you have 60 days from when you filled out that abatement. So either give it to him or not give it to him. From there, you either send the letter and deny it, or it's automatically denied after 60 days. Then he has to apply to a county commissioner, for his abatement, because he's the one asking for the abatement.
Now, can we apply to county commissioners, being proactive about it and get a decision? Or we have to wait for him to make that decision?
Right. Because if you don't make the move, then if they deny, they don't even want to talk about it, you know?
Right.
Why do we talk about something you're not going to give money back, you know?
Again, if he's entitled to it, we want him to have it.
Right.
But the biggest issue I have with it is the setting of precedence moving forward.
Right.
Because it's going to be a thing.
Yeah.
And if it's, if it's legal, then it's a thing, you know?
And if it's a thing, right.
This is our first one, and we need to do it right. That's...
And I think if we don't, we're going to have more people that have two homes apply for it, and how are we going to stop it? You know, we didn't stop this one, and we can't stop anybody else.
Right.
We're going to do something, just do it fair across the board throughout the town. That's what we go, we can talk, you know? You could be wrong, but you were wrong to everybody, at least, you're on the same page.
We don't have a copy of Kristen's letter here, do we?
No, I just, I just forwarded that email to...
I read it. I didn't bring it with me.
Before you go too much further, I have a motion of this.
Yeah, we should have started with that.
Well, I know where you're getting technical advice from Josh. You probably didn't necessarily have to. But before you discuss this as a board, you probably technically should have a motion with a second.
Do we have? We don't have his abatement form here, do we?
No, we don't. That was last time.
That scissors right there. Just trying to find the issue.
So I guess I would make a motion, well, make a motion to approve the abatement for Dale Gray. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Now let's go into a discussion on this. So motion on the floor is to approve the abatement.
I think we need to take it to the next level.
You feel that we should let Dale apply to the county commissioners and let somebody above us?
That'll give us our, that'll give us our answer.
They'll take the answer from further above us.
So we have to deny it at that point?
Well, we've got to, we've got to vote for it or vote against it.
Right. Because if we approve it, he doesn't need to go, right?
Right.
Could I say something?
Yep.
In the end, if you deny it, I will write up a denied letter. The selectmen have to sign it and send him a copy of it. That's the official way to do it. The other official way is just to let it go, 60 days, and he's denied any. Usually work there with the town. But, you know, send a letter to him, or the selectmen. Because you guys are the ones that make the final decision.
So any further discussions?
I mean, I don't, I don't think we should let it go to 60 days. I don't feel that's right either. And then we've discussed it, we should...
I would agree with Josh on that. He deserves a decision whether he ate or not.
Right. I agree with that too. So he could be notified immediately if, if we opt not to do this. So the motion is to accept his application for homestead exemption. And let's take it to vote. Who votes to accept his abatement for homestead exemption? So it is not a vote. We're going to have to notify him. Is that you or Josh that notifies him?
I, I write a letter. I have to meet officials, and I have to put, given his rights, you have 60 days to go, apply for the county commissioners. But you guys actually have to...
Sign that, you sign that. So you'll produce, you'll produce a letter and send it to us, for us to sign?
Yeah. I'll email a letter to you by the end of the day tomorrow, and then you guys send it and send it to him.
It's probably, it's probably the new point, that you probably should say, say the words "motion failed" on that.
Yep. So the motion is failed. And we are going to have Hamlin Associates draft a letter for us to sign, so that Dale can move to the next level of county commissioners. Okay, moving on. Next item is public hearing for two nights brewing.
This is just an informational. We had initially set that up to precede this meeting. John Boynton, who is the PC EDC person, the Scotty Chris County Development Corporation, person that's working with us all on this grant, is, is brand new to his position and kind of learning as he goes. We had a meeting in Dover a couple weeks ago where we agreed that this, when the hearing date would be, and we posted it in the paper, and then he came back from a training that he went to and learned that HUD, who is providing the money for this grant, has all these requirements, and what has to go in the paper is a legal notice, has to have HUD logo on it. So by the time we got to the point of re-advertising, we fell outside the 10-day window. So we went ahead and advertised it for a week from tonight. So there'll be a public hearing here, 6:00 PM next Wednesday, the 10th. And that's primarily for the public to ask John and Don what their plans are with this, with this grant.
It's at five or six?
It's at five. Did I say six?
You said six.
I apologize. It's at five. Thank you for getting there. And that's all there is on that item.
Okay. Item C, Sixth Mill Street property.
I have been trying to harvest some information on how much it was possible to take this down. As near as I can tell from a handful of people that have, well, actually, I had two. One local, one from the Winterport area. The Winterport one put 32,000, the local one is just a hair under 30,000. So I think if you want to move forward with the demolition of this, my recommendation is a special town meeting where we ask the town to appropriate up to, not to exceed $35,000 for the demolition, which we then are clear to the voters will be leaned on the taxes of that property. But it's your decision. We do not, we're not required to take this action, but where we have, we have a legal right to take this action.
Where do we stand timeframe on having to get through that?
Well, if we set, if we set a special town meeting tonight, we could do it probably the later parts of September. And we could put this out that would be due in for your second selectman's meeting in October. So you're looking at being able to award the contract on October 15. So you could probably, I mean, that's giving somebody roughly two months where they can get it done before they ran into weather considerations. And I did, I have since learned, since the last meeting, I've talked to the Department of Health and Human Services, and Stephanie, they have retained Stephanie's guardianship.
They have?
The judge continued that.
You feel that this, this needs to be dealt with this calendar year? They can't stand until, until Springstown meeting?
I don't know, Jeff.
We're, we're through the, the hot season.
Any more complaints on orders?
I've talked to, I've talked to one Larson, who's on the corner there. He said he could stand up in his yard there during the hot spell, and he could smell it. But as Jeff pointed out, we're through the, we're through the heat of the year. I suspect we could probably wait until...
Our annual town meeting.
Our annual town meeting.
I go by every single day, at least twice a day. I roll my windows down just to see if I can smell anything. I mean, I never smell a thing on my inside, it's a different story, but...
What's your input, Lance?
I didn't smell it the other time. I smelled this one, I opened the door to put the contents on it. I walked right up to the glass door, couldn't smell it, as soon as I cracked the door, it was strong. It was fairly fresh, though. We don't, we don't have to tear it down, right?
No, no, we don't.
We're not obligated to.
We're not obligated to do anything.
It belongs to the bank at this point in time.
You know, I'm honestly not sure if the bank owns it, or Stephanie stole it.
I know that bank contacted me about something, and they said, well, that explains, you know, why...
Yeah, it was a third, it was a third-party person contact.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because they contacted both of us, you know?
It was in, it was in, whatever you call it. You know, foreclosures.
Joe, question, Tom?
Yeah, a question. Were the control burned, the possible, or are the exposures controlled?
Too close. They're like, literally, one, one of them's within eight feet. It's close. They're close.
Well, see how big you are.
I'm not taking that unnecessary risk.
I'd say it was done in the past.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Joe.
That's what I thought, too. It's a closure, so it would be a problem. That'd be the cheapest way out. But if you can't do it, you can't do it.
I don't, I don't think, I mean, I, you know, Pat and Glenn are the most, you know, Glenn Larson, they would be on the corner towards Main Street, and Pat's on the other side. They're, they want something done, but they're not pushing hard on it. They're not, they, I, I don't think it's causing a lot of distress to the neighborhood. And let's face it, in another six weeks, by the time we can get anything done, we're going to be in frost weather and...
That's where I was going with that. I'm not in a hurry to spend $35,000.
I don't think you need, I don't think we need to be in a hurry for it. I mean, I think we...
I mean, if there's, if there's a public health risk, or if there's...
I think as long as people stay out of the building, there's no, no public health risk.
Okay, so we don't need to make any decisions on it. It's informational. Okay. Item D is the Old Town Hall building.
Well, I would go ahead, last Thursday night, Dennis, Steve Gervony, and I went for a little walk on the roof. And Dennis is probably a better person to give a report on this than I am.
Dennis, it's you.
Well, the last time we went around the barn on this, we had, we'd been promised that all three dormers have been redone for $50,000 or in that wall.
Fifty-six, I bet you read that.
Fifty-six, okay. They did not do the south dormer. The north one was done, the east one was done, the south one is not. I used the lift for a couple of days and did the fascia on the, on the west side and painted it and replaced half of it with tannin. I don't know where we're at. As I, as I remember it, when Steve was here the last time, he said, well, for $56,000, no, this, all three dormers are going to be done. They finished the second one and walked away from it. And I talked to Steve Thursday, and he's frustrated as can be trying to deal with them. They gave us initially a price of $18,800 to fix the roof, plus lift rent, but for a month, which was $3,800, I believe. We ended up having to look for two months, so we had to pay for that. I'm not real keen on some of the work that they did. It's not up to my standard, but it's not leaking. I don't know where we go with this. I would love to see that south dormer done, but if they want, they want two and a half times what they initially quoted, and then they want another, I don't know how much to do that third one. When I, I went and talked with the two guys who were doing the job, after they'd been up there patching shingles for 10 days or so, and asked them how they were doing, and he said, well, we're about done. And I said, what would you find with the dorm, with the ballots? And they said, oh, we're not touching dogs. And that was a surprise to me. And I asked them, and when the foreman revealed, he said he'd be there the next day. The next day I stopped by, and he wasn't around. And I said, we talked with him, and he said, he answers to the guy in St. Louis, and he doesn't talk to you unless you own the town president of it. So anyway, I emailed Steve, and Steve got on their case, and they, they did the north dormer. But by the time they get done with the north dormer, the price was up to over $30,000. They, as far as I understand it, they had no intentions of doing any of the dormers. All he was going to do was patch the broken shingles for $18,000.
And going into this, I think we all felt like the $18,000 was an unachievable goal.
It was modest, to be sure. But, okay, so if he, if he, I, I don't, we didn't have the contract between the roofing company and, you know? We're, we're kind of a third party to this. The contract should have stated that they were...
Scope of work?
That they, at least the north dormer was going to be done, and the other two would be guaranteed not leaking. And apparently, they, they wanted to get by by just doing the repair work and not doing the dormer. I, I don't know. Uh, I'm not too keen on some of the work that they did. I don't think it's.
What is it you saw that you didn't like?
Well, it's, I've got pictures on my phone. There's a couple of places, uh, one shingle that's cracked and instead of replacing it, they shoved a piece of copper up underneath the crack and, and left it. And if that were on the back of my shed, I would, I would do the same thing. But given the, the caliber of this job and what we're doing here, uh, I don't think we wanted a patched job. I think we wanted it done first class. Um, there were a couple of shingles that the corners are broken off, so they shoved a piece of copper up there and, and tacked it in with, and with a couple of nails and a little timer on it. It is not gonna leak. If, that's not the problem, but it's not the call, the caliber of work that I would have expected on a job of this size. And, and the price is, is way out of line. Um, the original contract should have included fixing the shingles and the, the north dormer. And if they had to charge more for the other two dormers, okay, but they were at thirty thousand dollars by the time they got the, the north dormer done. And now they're at fifty-six and, and I don't know where we'd, where we'd be if we pressed them to do the third one. I asked Steve if he could come tonight. I mean, not here, so.
Steve, Steve did say though, at the end of our conversation with him on Thursday, that he was going to get in contact with him and get some answers. And the other thing is he was gonna contact the historic preservation office on specifically on putting the copper underneath the slate to see if that was considered acceptable by their standards. Cause technically everything we did that on that building should meet the requirements of the historic, National Historic Preservation Act.
The south dormer, I don't believe is leaking. I don't think that's an issue. But the, the valleys down through there are rusted tin. They're not copper, they're rusty tin. They're not leaking apparently and, and they probably will go a while.
They don't look very good though.
They're, they're not pretty. They're not pretty. Uh, they'll go a while, but who knows how long. You know, there was talk of this, we wanted this roof, you know, for a hundred years or something like that. Uh, if you put copper in there, yes, that, that sheet metal does not, doesn't cut it for that.
The frustrating, frustrating part for me, I've been a part of this since the beginning, just like you have Dennis. And all of our conversations with our engineer, all of our conversations as a town hall committee, every conversation has included the fact that you and I stood there and watched the valleys leak. Has been made very clear right from the get-go, when we hired the engineer. And to have that eighteen thousand dollars not include doing valleys, there's, there's, there's a hole in the program in some way.
You know, I, I met with the two roof companies that came. Uh, I, and I pointed out to both of them the problem with the leak with the, with the, that north side.
Mm-hmm.
And made it very, very clear, uh, that, that was, that was the issue. The, the broken cracked slates around was kind of, uh, secondary to them leaking dormer. And I made it very clear and I think Mike and Brian, I think we had.
I, I will agree with you. I think that, I, I think they understood, my feelings, they should have understood the work that needed to be done.
I, I think it would, I think it would very clear upfront and I don't think we really got what we asked for.
I don't personally feel, but this is the roofer's problem. I think the problem starts with our engineer. Because he's the one who made the contract and they probably just followed their contract.
Is it a contractual problem or is it a?
I, I've never seen a contract, Josh, so.
Right, right.
And that's the problem. Well, that's being out of the rule.
Right. Have, have we paid anything? We paid the masons.
We did pay the masons.
Okay.
But that's it. We paid the masons and we paid, we're, we're partners, associates for some of their engineering costs.
Okay.
But that is it. We have not paid roof systems of Maine at all.
Do we know what we paid them? The masons and?
I don't know off the top of my head. We could, we could, we could come up with that information very easily, but. But, you know, we were up there and look, those fellows did a good job.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm very happy with the, the masons. Uh, it looks good to me. I don't think it's any problem. I went by here several times while Roof and Crew was working. There were a number of days when that lift sat and never moved and we were paying a hundred and fifteen, twenty dollars a day rental on it. And I realized there was some days in the nineties and I, I particularly wouldn't wanna be up there either in the Pinnock's days. But there were other days, um, and I'd go by and two or three times I went by and the lift was up on the roof. And there was nobody around, work, there was nobody up there working and there wasn't, uh, no sign of anybody, or where they were, I can't.
Well, you know, there was, to be fair to, to them, there was one day I thought the same thing. And I went into the town hall and went up and went all the way up to the, to the attic and I could hear him talking up there. So they were up there, they just weren't in, in view.
Yeah, okay.
But that may have been just one isolated incident too.
I, I talked with some other people who, who mentioned the same thing, but they didn't appear to be putting in a, a, a strong day or a strong week to put that back.
Well, we were given a paper the last time he was here that stated seven days per dormer, correct? When they went to that fifty-six thousand, they said it was gonna take seven days max per dormer.
Right. And they don't know what they've spent the time on it.
And unfortunately through this project, the engineers in the driver's seat with all the contracts and with all the communication and, and with all of it, so. Our gripe at this point has to be with Steve.
Where in the passenger seat, he's in the driver's seat.
That's right. We need for him to advocate for us. You know, if they're not gonna do the whole entire scope work, then we need to talk about the money.
Yeah.
And find somebody that does want to fix it.
If they wanted to call it good at thirty thousand or something like that and, and.
Then we got our money's worth.
I, I, I would say, okay. Uh, if they want fifty-six thousand and then more on top of that to do the third one, I, I thought we were getting all three done for fifty-six thousand.
Right. I clearly thought the same thing.
You as well.
I will contact Steve tomorrow and convey our concerns.
Yep.
All right, moving on. Item E, opening of the bids for the retired fire truck. And it looks like we have a few. Okay, the first bid is from Richard Perry and the bid is for four thousand dollars.
Richard Perry? I think he might be one of us from Hawaii, wasn't he?
Nine-nine-seven number would be Monson, right?
He just said he wasn't local and he got a committee on his bill.
Second bid. Tim Robinson Dover True Value five thousand dollars.
Five thousand one.
Five thousand one.
Five thousand one dollars.
That makes a difference.
Right. Third bid from Mark Pullen for seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Sorry, Mark. That's an interesting number, isn't it?
Bill, trust me, that'll keep him, keep him out of trouble with his wife not getting the bill.
The fourth, fourth, final bid is from Warren Newt for four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So I make a motion to accept the highest bid for the fire truck. Okay, discussion?
Gotta get it.
The highest bid is for Robin, Tim Robinson at true value. Let's take a vote to accept his bid. Unanimous, Tim Robinson has awarded the fire truck.
I will stop in and see him before I come to work tomorrow morning.
Okay, Eric. Next item is Eric Dorff from Solar on Earth.
Thanks a lot very much everybody for taking time out of your night and letting me do part of it. I appreciate it. Is, uh, is back here okay or was it before I came up or?
Nope, we can hear you just fine.
Okay, I had the privilege of meeting with Mike Councilman a few days back to kind of briefly describe Maine's community solar program. But, uh, just for any of you who are present today who might not be aware of the program, I'll try to just summarize it in a nutshell. I know they won't be here all night. Uh, Maine has a program now, you've seen some of these solar farms going up and what we can do is subscribe to these farms. It's almost like equipmentless solar. These farms have an incentive to feed CMP's grid with this solar energy. The state of Maine has pretty much said, if you want to get approved to finish the development of this farm, uh, you've gotta offer our constituents an opportunity to subscribe to the solar farm. And doing so, what happens is the town of Sangerville will, um, allow CMP to share the meters the town oversees with the developer. What that developer will do then is accumulate, take the, the collection of those kilowatt hours that you use over the meters you all oversee and they're gonna allocate that much solar power for Sangerville to CMP to essentially power you all. By doing that, um, when once that farm has been fully subscribed to by residential homeowners, business owners, municipalities, the state of Maine essentially allows that developer to move forward, upgrade the substations, things like this. And maybe some of that money comes from grant money. So Maine is aware that this is all public information and you will all be aware of this. So by subscribing to the farm and knowing that some of your tax dollars are going to these farms anyway, to see their completion in full, once you've been given the opportunity to subscribe to that. The way the program works is when those credits get applied to your bill, when CMP has shared your meter information, those bill, those credits will offset your CMP bill. How that works is, um, CMP will share your bill with the developer. Developer will allocate the solar credits onto that bill. That offsets your meter read essentially. Am I losing you?
No.
No.
This one, sorry.
I've heard it before.
Okay. Uh, if you have any questions, please don't be afraid to just raise or if I'm going too fast, I mean, I really don't mind at all. Um, so what's gonna happen is, uh, CMP, since they still remain your provider, nothing changes with them. Uh, they're still gonna control your rates. Uh, unfortunately, I wish the program could lower them, but you know, that's not really how it works. Uh, so your rates could still go up, it could go down, however the MTC and CMP C fit. If you have a third party supplier, which I don't believe you do, cause you did, I think you did those for me guys, you were on standard offer. Um, same thing, you know, if CMP increases that, that's just the nature of the beast. However, what will happen is regardless of what rates that CMP is charging you all, this program comes in after the fact. So you will always save a fifteen percent on your utility bill regardless of what happens with the rates. Because CMP still stays your provider, they're still maintaining a grid. If there's ever any transmission, um, transformer issues, line issues, meter issues, uh, on the CMP bill, the delivery charge, not the, not the charges from your delivery and your supply, that is your kilowatts that get multiplied by their rates, but there's a set delivery charge. That's still gonna be on the CMP bill. But the charges that are connected to the electricity usage per, every meter you oversee, those will be covered by the solar developer. And how the town saves fifteen percent is, again, I think I used the two hundred dollar, just mathematical examples, just cause it's really easy to do. Uh, if one of the meters you oversee is two hundred dollars, save the town office. The developer will cover that two hundred and they invoice the town one seventy, saving the town thirty bucks or fifteen percent. When we got the utility bills, um, from the town office, we were able to do a cost analysis, pretty much just a breakdown of what the savings could look like for the town of Sangerville, based exactly on what rates you're paying as recent as the most current coffee, uh, utility bills you provided me. And what we do is we put that into our, you know, essentially our algorithm and it breaks down your cost analysis for you. Again, important factors to understand, this isn't a, a program that costs anything to enroll into it. And it's, it's not a program where leadership were to change, say you were to vote yesterday and, um, and go into the program for two years, three years, five years in a row. Leadership were to change and for whatever political or ideological, ideological reasons, uh, the town would wanna pull out. Uh, it doesn't cost anything to, to opt out of the program. It's a Maine backed, state backed program. They're really just trying to, again, keep the solar energy into our state, keep it into our grids. Uh, and in doing so, they're putting those restrictions on those developers by saying, hey, you let our constituents essentially subscribe to this farm or you don't, you don't get the grant money in the form. Uh, going back to the savings, I know some of you don't have this in front of you and you can pass it around if you like, but just in a nutshell, if CMP were to keep their rates exactly what you're paying now over the life of the program, which is, which is twenty years, the town of Sangerville could save eight thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars. But what we do do is the very next column, um, is we actually look at the trend of their rate increases. And we can put that in there and it can literally calculate down to the hundredth percent of what you could be paying over the course of the next twenty years, which I hate to say it sadly, if you're paying, it's a good thing, cause you're paying more, you're saving more, but if you're saving more, that means you're paying more, right? So if CMP does keep going with the trend that the rate increases they've been doing, realistically, you're closer to almost twelve thousand dollars savings over the life of the, of the program. Eleven thousand seven hundred and seventy-six to be exact. It essentially breaks down to, at the start, a little over four hundred dollars a year and then that just incrementally increases as CMP's rates will too. If they don't increase, you're at four hundred and seventeen dollars savings a year for the next twenty years. But again, for something that's not gonna cost the town anything to get into, it doesn't cost the town anything to get out of, literally the only extra step is technically for your treasurer or clerk, whoever's paying your bills, to just oversee that second invoice that comes in. Everything is consolidated on CMP bill too. It will be on there where the kilowatt hours are covered by the solar farm. And, uh, and then the invoice that they send in, uh, will match exactly what you see on the CMP bill. Hey guys, we covered two hundred dollars. Uh, here's your invoice for one seventy. Does anyone have any questions about the program at all? It's important to note that by enrolling, they're not gonna put a field up because you all voted. There's not extra equipment going up. There's not an array that's gonna wind up in someone's backyard or on the buildings anywhere. These are programs and projects that are already in place. Uh, they just haven't got to that last step yet, whether it's the upgrading of the substation or, uh, things like that. But these things have already got, you know, the, the, probably the big farm close to, uh, Athens is a big one there that just went up. Uh, I'm not exactly sure until we submit your meter sizes to the actual developer, once you enroll, whether you kind of shop around to each farm and speeding your grid to which one has the vacancy to take you on. whether they should kind of shop around to each farm and speeding your grid to which one has the vacancy to take you on. Uh, but it's a local farm, it's not one coming from any other state, it's coming right out of the state. And, uh, the good news about it, do you mind if I steal this back from you? And I don't, I've never met anyone who didn't scoff at the savings. Uh, but there are some who actually just do believe that solar energy or just clean renewable energy in general, or solar, hydro, or wind, do have a positive impact on the environment versus fossil fuels. So people, you know, not everybody, but some. In this case, based off of when we got the bills from you, we can see the exact number of kilowatt hours you use. We know what that calculates as far as metric tons of CO2 put into the, to the air. And the town of Sangerville, just you guys, just you guys with a couple of meters that you oversee by joining a program, could remove a hundred and forty-one metric tons of carbon out of the air, which is the equivalent of forty-five, uh, acres of forest. Essentially, the trees you would save by enrolling. Um, and then that's the equivalent of thirty-one gas-powered cars off of the road. Just simply by enrolling. It's really neat data. Um, the rest of the, the pamphlets that I handed to the gentleman on the board, um, are just information about the program again. And, uh, and a little bit about our company too. We would, we would essentially be, thank you, we would essentially be your representative. Um, anytime you work with larger conglomerates like, uh, like a developer in this case, um, you have the, I guess, the customer service aspect from our company. You don't have to call a developer if you have any questions, where there are outsourced call centers, there's wait times, probably even a language barrier, I don't know. Um, you would just call me. My team, depending on the nature of your question, have direct contact numbers, the people, depending on what department, is the nature of your question. We're getting answers, you know, depending on whatever you call me at the time of the day, and in less than a business day. But I actually don't feel I'm yielding a lot of questions once it comes in, mostly it's when the first bill comes in. Because sometimes it's three or four billing cycles from now and people are like, okay, I'm sorry, I know we talked about this, but how does this bill work again? These credits are on here, my CMP is almost non-existent, but I know I must have to pay something. So outside of that, that's usually the only questions I'm ever yielding, but billing has been working out just fine. This is the seventh year of the program. Um, credits are exactly how they're saying they work out and, uh, and all in all, it's just a, it's a way to save the town, the townspeople some money. And who, who doesn't, you know, mind saving money?
Right. Where does your piece come from? Obviously you have a salary and people and...
Lot of overhead, car, insurance, gas car.
Where does your piece, where does your piece come from?
Good question, the developer.
Comes from the, the solar field developer?
Yep, yep.
So that, that, that credit is divided between you providing that service and us as a consumer?
You're gonna get a guaranteed fifteen now. That doesn't mean a hundred percent of the, they keep eighty-five percent of like the grant money because they're kicking everybody who enrolls fifteen percent, right? We're, we're a chunk of that, that overhead of theirs too. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, so your piece comes directly from them.
Right, it doesn't come out of anything you guys get, because the state of Maine made it perfectly clear, anyone who subscribes to the farms are gonna receive a fifteen percent reduction off of their, their.
So you're a component of their PR that they've outsourced essentially?
We're like an acquisition firm, is how I really like to define it, because that's really the closest definition, if you will. We don't, we don't answer to them, we're just employed by them because they don't have the infrastructure to send someone out here to educate and enroll people into this program. Uh, you know, could you imagine if a guy just puts a few poles in the ground and hangs some, some panels up and then comes here and tries to, you know, talk to you guys about a program that's run by the state of Maine? You know, we're educated in it, we had to take tests on it, we're constantly being upgraded, we're also educated in Maine utilitarian law. I know all about third-party supply and what they can and can't do, the fact that they don't answer the MPUC. Um, we have direct connections with CMP too. Uh, believe it or not, CMP, the more solar power that comes into their grid, the more state of Maine does this to them too. There's tax incentives, there's a lot of benefits that come out of the Green Energy Fund that the state of Maine, I mean, I don't like this, this information, but state of Maine does, you know, hand to hand CMP some, some breaks too. You know, and I think they make enough. But, um, it's a sad reality of it, and it is our tax dollars that, that go to these already, it's already put up. So what we do is, the developer needs us to find subscribers for that farm, right? Once they get those subscribers, they get their grant money, the developer takes care of us, gives you fifteen percent. What I look at it, it's like, my tax dollars are parting onto these things. This is a way of getting some of that tax dollars back without having to pay into anything, because we already technically have, really.
We've had, we've had some solar field discussions with different people in the town. There are people that are for them and there are people that are middle of the road and there are people that are dead set against them. The only piece, the only piece that I have concern with is how, how that is viewed by the, by the people of the town, our involvement in basically being a, a partner or a consumer with a solar field, the, the people that are dead set against them. I guess that would be my biggest concern. I mean, who doesn't wanna save, save money?
Exactly.
I mean, it's, it's gonna reduce.
And for those who usually sit on that side of the fence, what I like to say, because I've done many, many town meetings and there are people who voiced their concerns and that's their exact concerns, like, you know, solar this, solar that, fields, the tree, you know, the land I take up. There's a couple of things that a lot of people don't really take into consideration. And I would employ anyone to just pull over someday, go to that farm or that large landowner who has put panels up. And you'll find in a lot of situations, because that land wasn't yielding anything that was producing something that they can make an income off of. In fact, they are losing money on it. That's a very common scenario for why these landowners go into these deals with these developers. The second thing is, and it's the most heartbreaking, is that some of these, uh, farmers and landowners that own all these lands, these, you know, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty acres of land, um, the generations underneath them aren't coming behind them and doing the five AM to seven PM work that it takes, the backbreaking work that it takes to cultivate farm these lands, it's just, it's not there. So they're, the owners now are thinking of a, you know, kind of like a retirement plan, that's not now, you know, cropping and, and baling and all of that. Um, but what I like to tell them is like, you know, you don't like looking at the panels, you don't like looking at the farms when you're driving, you commute to work. I get that, but it's already there, so if you can take a little bit of money of that and put it back in your pocket without having any more equipment or anything additional being built, we're not gonna put equipment on your building, we're not gonna build a new array, there's not a lot of farms going up. The ones, especially in this area, are, are kinda dumb, I don't, I don't think there's any more going up. So, um, what you were able to do for the town is save them twelve thousand dollars without putting up a single panel.
I have two more going up in Parkland.
In Parkland, yep.
There's still one, there's still one more that's gonna go up here, right?
That was supposed to be, I haven't, uh...
I haven't heard anything from him.
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything from him in a long time. It was supposed to be the same company that did this one. We're supposed to have two in Sangerville, we've got the ones apart.
Yep. I don't know about that other one, I didn't, I, I didn't hear any progress.
Well, it's still Chase there, whatever, still their contact guy, right?
As far as I can, yeah, Chase Bradley.
Yeah, yeah.
What happens is a lot of these smaller subcontractors make these agreements on their own, this land, once this equipment's in place, again, before it starts to see lieutenant power of the grid, they turn around, they sell it, the project to these developers or a part of this program. Uh, they make their money in the hills or just go buy it.
Well, the incentives are drawing up.
Exactly, yeah.
Now, this, this program is only offered to municipalities?
No, 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 not at all, no, you can do this at your home, if you own a business. Uh, that's where it started. Uh, like I said, it's its seventh year, it was just residential. But then when Maine understood the size of its farms and the power to put now, it was taking, it was taking a long time to find subscribers for these farms. Um, simply because of the very minimal amount of kilowatt per hour use that would come out of some of Maine's rural residential homes, let's be real, you know? Five, six, seven hundred kilowatts on average, if that, you know, and, uh, so then they're like, well, let's open it up to small business, which is, uh, small general service, SGS classified meters, which is what yours are. Um, let's open it up to those, it was small businesses, you know, small little quick stops or gas stations or, you know, auto, auto body shops. And what they were running into too is a lot of the business owners were enrolling their homes too, but even at that rate, it was still taking too long on a developer's eyes to fill the farms. So that's in the state of Maine, so well now let's open it up to schools and municipalities, towns.
The Chinese grocery market. They'll sign up in a minute.
Oh, yeah.
They'll sign up in a minute.
Mm-hmm. Uh, marijuana dispensaries honestly are some of, uh, a lot of the, the biggest users, I mean, like, for city and...
With three phase power.
We don't have any of the ones that Peter Mills approved, I'll tell you that, but, uh...
Those ones I'm looking at.
Yeah, we've got some, we've got, we've got some, and they're, they're, they're decent sized. But now it's municipality, schools. What Maine is essentially saying is, they want to go after the, 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 the blue collar, you know, the, the hardworking constituents because they're, well, number one, the ones that are paying the most taxes, let's be real, are the ones that keep every, all these towns going. So they look at it, they're giving you a break, but you're also the ones that do attend the town meetings, you're also the ones that do decide if something comes up and goes up in your town or not. So they wanna grease the wheels with you guys a little bit by offering this instead of this program, because they feel it softens the blow, uh, some, um, when it comes to those who are in opposition of solar. Uh, but either way, you look at it as a win-win. They put some money back in your pocket, they show the towns some savings. You do offset your carbon footprint for those who are, you know, environmentally conscious and, and do want to seek more clean and renewable sources of energy. And, uh, and they, by filling these farms up, um, get to almost justify having put that farm there because now you've saved money, you've lessened your impact on the environment, and they look at it like it's a win-win. But the real winners are the developers and CMP.
What was the savings for the utility district, do you remember that, or you?
Uh, Coke, uh, Coating TDN, oh yeah, um, I can, you know, they don't mind if I share, I think I brought the thing with you. They were significant, um, because...
Because you guys use a lot of electricity.
They do, they do.
We use it a ton. Uh, so we got those three phase blowers going twenty-four seven.
You know, and they just, uh, we just enrolled them a few days ago, uh, so I should remember, so I thought it may have been...
Pump station was run.
So just to give you some context, their annual spend is ninety-five thousand one hundred and nine dollars. Um, we're gonna save them two hundred and forty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars over the course of the program. I mean, a quarter million dollars, that's, that's, that's it for, for found money. It's not like they had to pay us eighty-five thousand to save two hundred and forty-nine thousand, they're just paying a second bill.
Hell, if I were you, man, I could go ask for a raise.
I'm going to.
Well, you know, we hope that that's what happens. When towns, communities, businesses, especially the businesses, enroll in this program and we show savings anywhere from ten, twelve thousand to one hundred and twenty thousand, put that back into your community, you know, for those business owners, give the, give the, give your levers a raise, you know? It's just, it's found money that didn't cost you anything, the state's already allocated your money without your saying to these farms anyway. You know, take some of that money there.
So does anybody have any questions? Eric, remember Manny Colts, right? Ask questions, so.
I welcome anything, by, um, eh, good or bad, tough or easy. Uh, and I, I can guarantee you, there's not someone gonna throw something at me that I haven't heard before, or seen before.
Is it supposed to be one of the deals where you earn the credits from the summer and use them in the winter? Is that kinda how it works?
Yeah, uh, well, you, you, they, they, panels still produce, you know, and generate, you, you know...
Because everybody I've talked to, everybody I've talked to has signed up for just household, says they haven't noticed anything, no changes in the bill. So that's why I wondered, are they earning it in the summer or are they...
You know, in some, are they even, are the credits even hitting their bill yet? Because you do see that significant change on your CMP bill. Uh, it's, it can't be ignored if you can't miss it.
Does it show up on your CMP bill?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Does it show up because this is from solar?
Yes. You know, on the second page of your CMP bill, where's that graph with your meter information, that's your meter, uh, serial number, your meter read from the thirty days prior, the meter read, uh, as the thirty days after. Those two numbers and the difference of that kilowatt hour is what they carry up and then multiply by the rates in charge of it. Well, that right there, that line gets offset by other lines below that, which aren't the panels that have been allocated for the town of Sangerville, for example. So when your bill goes from two hundred and forty-two dollars down to forty-two dollars, because now they're just, they don't have any kilowatt hours to bill you for, right? So to answer your question about the summer versus winter, your panels still produce, um, uh, power even in the winter, but sometimes because we just have less sun exposure. The sun rises a little later, sets a lot sooner. Um, they don't generate as much credits in the winters due to summer. So when it comes to sizing for the meters, for every, uh, for the, the, this case, the town, um, what they wanna do is size you in a manner where in the summer, those panels are gonna produce more kilowatt hours of power than what you're using. Because in the winter, when the productivity of those panels decrease, and a lot of times, especially like town halls and fire departments or whatever, there's heat pumps and their electricity use just goes up in the winter, right? So if they're using more power than what the panels are producing, any banked credits you have, which come from them producing more power for you in the summer than what you're using, if you use five hundred, they produce a thousand for you, that extra five hundred gets banked for you. So in the winter, if that were to flip, where you use a thousand kilowatt hours, they only generated five hundred that month, you can pull that five hundred from the bank, it's still offsetting you without them even having, had generated enough to cover you. And that's how they can tell you you're saving fifteen percent on a billing cycle, a calendar billing cycle, annual billing cycle. When you start out, you're enrolling now in the fall, the two to three billing cycles it takes to get those credits on the utility bill and get all the logistics worked out with it, um, you'll be going into fall and winter. So in the interim, when those things are producing power and credits for you and getting applied, depending on how much you're using at the time, um, you don't have a very big, you know, demand for power with just the meters you oversee. So that being said, there's probably a good chance they're gonna get right out of that, boy, already start generating enough for you to cover it. But just in the event where they don't, any difference where you don't have banked credits to pull from, that difference will still be carried up to your CMP bill, charged by whatever the rates they are. So you'll have a delivery charge and then a very small kilowatt hour charge, um, that, that, that will get applied to the rates. Uh, that is whatever the difference of the generated credits versus what you actually used. So if you use five fifty and they only generate four hundred, one fifty gets carried up, multiplied by their rates, and then that would be your CMP bill. And then whatever the, you know, the, the, the panels generated for you, once that number of kilowatt hours is multiplied by their rates, that's what the developer will cover, then turn around and invoice you a eighty-five percent. It's clear that, I, I, I reiterate that people will look at their, you know, four hundred total dollar bill and think it's gonna be fifteen percent off that four hundred dollars, and it's not. Because of that four hundred, there is a delivery charge in there, thirty, forty, fifty dollars depending on the classification of the meter. So really, you're saving fifteen percent on the, you know, three fifty or three forty or whatever, depending on whatever the size of your service charges. And in the early stages of it, when those panels aren't, or possibly not generating more credits than what you're using, if you go into the winter, you don't have a banked allocation just yet, um, that difference, you're, you're still saving fifteen percent on whatever that covers, but sometimes it won't be the entirety of the bill, does that make sense? But over the course, like that cost analysis showed you, you will still annually save fifteen percent, because once it rebalances in the summer, uh, you're cranking out credits more than what you're even using, and then they get carried over when you generate enough, it covers your bill anyway.
And your farms are going straight on the CMP's grid? So they, so they get the charge of delivery fee for power they didn't even create?
Exactly. That's why I told you CMP is making out more than anybody in this. Don't, don't get me wrong, we're just as inferior as anybody, I'm, I'm a CMP customer, you know, I can't stand them, I absolutely can't stand them, I think they're actually the worst.
I've seen some people's bills up to three hundred dollars delivery fees.
Oh, yeah, oh my, oh my God, yeah. And big MGS or IGS, uh, uh, accounts, they're, they're four, four fifty, five hundred, just for the delivery.
Winslow, three hundred dollars.
But generally, that means their bill is probably close to eight, nine, ten thousand dollars a month.
Now, this is a single-family home.
Oh, wow, that's different. Um, residential classified home, even with hot hubs and heat pumps, they shouldn't be paying delivery fee like that. In fact, if you don't mind, let me give you my heart, I can look at that, that's, there's something wrong with that. And because we're educated in utilitarian law, um, another... And because we're educated in utilitarian law, um, another perk of this, and where that comes in a lot, is what we also offer to our customers who enroll, cause I see it every single day, especially with residential homeowners, they go with a third-party supplier. The same standard offer CMP right now is ten, ten-six, it's ten cents right now, almost eleven cents. But this third-party supplier calls you in Texas, they don't have to answer the NPUC, they say, hey, I can give you your supply for six cents. Awesome. It sounds great to you when you have four cents difference at four or five, six, seven hundred kilowatt hours a month. You're saving, you know, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty bucks a month. You're doing good. What they don't tell you is that two-year contract you've signed with them, if you don't at the end of that two years physically call them and say, what's the rate now? Is it less, is it more, whatever, I want out in case it's at a number you don't want it to be, they automatically renew you, right? When they do that, and because they don't answer the NPUC when it comes to being able to increase their rates, that's exactly what they just do. Your rate jumps to a number where it covers the discount they've just given you over the last two years and then some. So when people start seeing their utility bills go up, but their, their routine hadn't changed at all, or they didn't add an addition or two more heat pumps, that's usually when they're calling us and saying, hey, I understand you have a program where we can save money, here's what's going on, I can't figure it out. I have found M G S classified homes. So to give you a perspective, a residential home is classified residential is small business, generally because the amount of kilowatts they use is classified small general service. And then you have your mills and your department stores, I mean, those are medium general service. I have seen a home that was classified medium general because forty years ago or something, it was a bed and breakfast with an operating kitchen with a hood system and everything, and it was doing more than twenty-two kilowatts a month for the, for consecutive months, where that's where CMP justifies reclassifying you. I caught that. In addition to the savings from the, from the program, they also were able to decrease the delivery charge by over two hundred dollars. So just right there by me offering a fifteen percent discount to their six hundred, seven hundred dollar residential home bill, um, I saved them almost two hundred dollars just by having CMP reclassify them, catching that error. And I'm pretty sure that they back rated it too, having understood that they had been misclassifying them for a long time. So we help with third-party supply here with that, and that's kind of putting you in a bad spot. We understand classifications and what the ratings is and what you have to be using as power, because you supply your bills to us, we know exactly every kilowatt hour you're using. So if there were to be a discrepancy, we catch it and uh we correct it uh for you through CMP, of course. So these are all just added bonuses to, to enrolling with our company that it's not even a charge to you because again, it's a program the state's backing, where just merely you get an acquisition for.
So that kind of brings up a question, and we have to be careful because of the confidentiality of GA, but uh general, general assistance, Michelle, I know, has given a lot of assistance out for CMP bills within the last year. Uh, if she sees something that really is out of whack, you know, can she give you a call?
Of course. I would encourage it. Please. CMP, like any entity, aren't perfect. You know, and they make mistakes, and several problems, those mistakes cost you money and could cost you a lot of power. Um, so, and I see them every day. I'm not saying CMP is making that many mistakes, but when I'm not doing town meetings and going to municipalities and school board meetings, um, for the first two and a half years of this company, I was door-to-door residential, and for every fifty residents I signed up, I promise you, I saw probably five to ten miscalculations or, or miscorrections, especially when smart meters, smart meters first started coming around. They don't, they weren't sending people out to read your meter anymore, the meter man. Um, what they were doing is going off of averages. So if one month, say you had a hot tub for a summer, and then you dumped that hot tub the next summer, if someone, that smart meter didn't read your meter, but there's an internet connectivity issue, they would just look back at your pass, oh, they use it on a kilowatt hours that month, that's how much they billed you for. And then you call up and say, well, I only used two hundred, what's going on? Or they actually six hundred, come, oh, the smart meter did an average based off of your usage in the history. And we catch it like the whole time too. It's crazy. They, they will, they will just charge you an average if the meter doesn't calculate what you actually used that month with the smart meters.
They always did that with camps in the winter time, they couldn't fix you anyway.
Exactly, exactly. They would go off of dish usage in the summer, so in the winter time you'd see a bill, you know, who didn't know it was there for three months. It's just things we run into every day. It's just, it's unfortunate, but it's true. Um, so at least we alleviate any, any kind of, you know, uh, uh, costs to the town uh in a tune of almost twelve thousand dollars. And um if then, now that you've met with me again and you can start, the wheels start turning, you understand some discrepancies or things you may have seen down the road. Um, even if someone doesn't enroll, you have my word, I would be right here to help someone out through it, just as a kind of something on heart. Because I don't want to see people who are, you know, social security paycheck to paycheck, uh, getting in a tough spot with a third-party supplier. You know, for, for me, the way I view it, the talent enrolling is good enough for me to continue to assist the talent. If that's constituents, then, then I'm at your service. That's our job. That's why we're here, shaking your hands, coming to your office, not throwing a flyer in the mailbox and having you look at it and say, okay, great, Nick.
Okay, any other questions?
Just offer a comment that within, you know, if you just look at a twenty-year span, within a year or two, we should be back, back in that building next door, and that's gonna impact the overall electric bill significantly.
It is. So the next step in this would be for us as a town to enroll with you.
Yes, sir.
And.
Now, this is just for town buildings, not for anybody's. And when you say us as a town, you're not enrolling all residents, you know?
Probably some of your town.
Yeah.
Yeah. This town office.
So now we've all been educated.
So you received two-power build, the CMP build from something.
Yeah, actually.
From a developer.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say for us, well, we don't pay, in the town office, we don't pay electricity right now, that's part of our rent.
Right, 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 right.
So we pay for, we pay for the veterans park, we pay for this building, we pay for the town garage, and we pay for the streetlights.
Do we have any power in, in the town hall?
Nope.
No. Streetlights must use a bit. And we were all LED last year, every year before.
It's still a lot.
Then there's like three of them.
Yeah.
Costs a lot to get public over there.
I'm gonna hold on to that one.
Just came.
Well, now we've been educated, I guess. I would make a, I would make a motion to enroll the solar on earth. Okay, now it's, any other discussion between us? I think my only concern is the people that are dead set against solar. How they're gonna feel about us enrolling our town in this.
I think, I think what would be more concerned would be how thirteen hundred people would have a major issue with us passing on the opportunity to save their tax dollars.
Correct. I, I agree with that as well.
I think it would be a very, it would be a split in this town. I think we would have people that wouldn't care about the savings if we didn't have to have anything to do with solar. And then there would be people that just don't care what's happening with savings.
Well, fiscal responsibility is the first line item in our job description.
Right.
And if you sit in the town office.
You'd have a better.
You hear from people, they, they want.
You'd have a clearer picture of that.
I feel that people would want this savings, cause it, as Eric explained, the solar farms in there, the state law, basically, I, it would be very, the way state law's written, it would be very, very difficult, and I think unenforceable if we were to pass an ordinance that said we didn't want solar farms in our town. I know a few towns have done that. And I think the reality is that the solar farms just, there's no, you know, why have a legal fight when you can go to the next town up the, up the line to get it done? But the way the state law was written looks to me like that ordinance that prohibits it wouldn't be enforceable anyway. So we have them in town, they've complied with our solar ordinance, but we're already making money off them.
Right.
So, I mean, this is just one more step where we can save our citizens a few bucks and I think the majority of our citizens would want us to make that decision to save the money.
I'm pretty certain to pass the straight face at town meeting, everybody raise your hand. I think this would be.
I, I agree.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, so, so the motion is to sign up, sign up the town of Sangiovese with solar on earth. We have a vote. All in favor. It's unanimous.
So Eric, you want us to know what we need to do?
Yep, well, that's, I always come prepared. Um.
Good salesman's always got a fan.
Uh, well, I was selling something. Um, you'd probably be the best to, to fill this out, but all it is is the application. Contact information for the developer, just a overview of the terms again.
You won't be escaping that either.
Yeah, if you don't mind. And um, just usually a lot of people get things up on it, these are just initials, but so are these. People like to do checks, but those are also initials. If you have any questions before you end up filling this all out, um, oh, that right there, you can find on the second page, well, you only had a couple of meters anyway, right? It was two. So I'll just go ahead and do that for you now.
Does it all feel normal meter?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um.
And those are all in the chat there right there.
All right. You just email that to me. A link will go to whatever email address you put on that piece of paper.
Okay.
To, that's how you get connected into your portal with AMPY on the developer. And what that does is just updates you with status updates, lets you know when they're connected. They'll say, hey, you're connected now, you have to see your bill in twenty days, thirty days, whatever. You can also see the productivity of the panels and how they're doing for you. It's really neat stuff. And that's also where the town would set up the billing situation when you do get invoiced. You got it. Thank you. I appreciate it, really. I know you guys give up.
Thank you.
Only time for stuff like this.
Thanks, Eric.
You're welcome. Thank you. Take care the other day. I appreciate you. Thank you for your service. Appreciate that, man. Thank you for listening to talk to our owner. It's appreciated. Thank you for your service. Appreciate that. Thank you. Great question. Appreciate it. You all have a great rest of your night. Hey?
You as well.
Four of the ones. Need a bedtime last time I get home.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Item B, abatement from Robin Center.
So she has an abatement and a supplemental. I'm not familiar with this resident, uh, but like I said, those are coming directly from Josh.
Yeah. So she's from Clifton, so it's probably seasonal property, you know, would you ask?
I'm, I'm assuming, yep. Usually Josh puts a reason on the abatements and supplementals to explain why he's done.
Okay, so this says it's correcting the family law where a piece was broken out.
Okay, so they would be abating, they, one resident got overcharged for that piece that was broken out. And she needed to pay for that same piece.
Right. And for clarity, this came from Josh.
Yep, he sent me an email with, with that attached.
This is his recommendation as well.
Yep.
And so there's two pieces to this one.
Yep, he, she should have an abatement and a supplemental.
I'm trying to find the two and put them together. Okay. Okay, now I'd like to make a motion that we follow Josh's recommendation in the, the abatement and the supplemental on this property.
Second.
And a vote? Okay, it's a vote. So that covers both the abatement and the supplemental.
Right.
The next one is a supplemental bill for Megan Potter, and it says that this property was split out from the family lot and needs to be taxed separately.
And he did not send me an abatement to offset that one. All he gave me was a supplemental.
Okay. So with this. So can we do a supplemental without an abatement?
You can. I think what's happened is he has broke it out, and so the original owner was only taxed from what they were supposed to have, but he didn't create an account for the second piece. So that's what the supplemental is for, is to bill.
So I'm assuming this is where Robin's house is broken off and burned Larry Beach property.
I believe so, yes.
And everyone, that's it. And that whole thing, all are in their portions of the tax, that's all been paid already.
Okay.
It's just multiple people came in to pay each portion.
So I make a motion that we sign the supplemental to Megan Potter.
Second.
Vote. Okay, and the final one is an abatement for Dave Carter.
So he brings his, his camper up every year or every summer. Well, evidently Josh thought that he left it here, that it wasn't traveling back and forth.
He originally did until this year.
Until, so, um, what he's done is he was actually taxing the camper as a, as property. And if it's registered, its, its size is being paid, so he shouldn't have taxed him. So this is just erasing the camper off our tax, tax documents.
I see the camper's gone now for the season.
It is, and I don't believe he's coming back.
I believe they're done up here.
Yeah, I think so too.
Year round in Florida.
I make a motion that we accept the abatement recommendation from the tax assessor's agent.
Second.
And vote? Okay, it's a vote. Pretty much not much discussion on those things. It's coming straight from the SS side.
It makes it easier that way.
Makes it easier. All right, next item is town manager's report.
All right, I'll go through it quickly in respect of Josh's hate for his chair. Six Mill Street, we already covered town hall, we covered the first part of that, but it hit us here. Uh, we did have a real positive meeting with the town hall committee and the historical society together. We've got those two groups in agreement to work, work together for fundraising and to open us up to the five-oh-one C-three funding. Uh, so we'll keep everyone posted on that. Our next combined meeting is on the twenty-fifth of September at six. Uh, they also wanna really kinda focus on getting a public relations campaign out there about. What we're doing, what we wanna do, what we can do, and some real good ideas exchanged at first meeting. That was last Thursday, really. Uh, so Sangerville Grange Road, from everything I've got, from the emails back forth between Kevin and Kirsten. Uh, I believe that that survey is taking place this week, that they're down there doing it.
And it's gonna be accompanied?
Uh, well, Jamie was in the office the other day, they didn't say, or yesterday didn't say anything, but. They certainly have, have spoken with Jamie so that, uh, if there's an issue, the sheriff's office will go down there. Make sure the law's being followed. ACO, we still have, we've had a couple of inquiries with no resumes or applications, we're still looking on that. Um, the PCEDC grant, we kinda already covered that. Uh, moving on to road commissioners. Uh, we've got most of the ditching for the year done, we've got a spot or two here and there. And we kinda need to try to figure out something on the McNaughton Hill Road, but we're not really sure what that is yet. I mean, it requires more discussion. Uh, we got culverts, trailer loaded culverts in the other day, delivered right to the town garage. From out of Canada, brokered through HC Haynes and, uh, save, saves the town a significant chunk of change by doing that. Uh, paving, pro seal assigned contract, they have to October fifteenth. They have to get it done, so like I said, I have a signed contract at hand, so I feel a little bit better about that now. I've had some recent communication with them. And winter sand, we're in the process of having some sand, do you know if Butch and Rob took that down to have it tested?
I haven't heard.
Well, we're somewhere in the process of having some sand tested, uh, to make sure it passes for the O P standards.
Stuff out of the Jackson pit?
Yeah, exactly. And that really is pretty much what. What I have, uh, I did say because of the dry conditions, we haven't got enough water to, to be significant. We're kinda still holding off on putting gravel on roads, cause if you try to gravel and it's this dry, you're gonna lose. A large portion of that gravel and dust, so it's just literally blowing money away. And I haven't even talked to the ensigns, but unless we get some rain here, I'm not sure if we even wanna have roads graded this fall.
Most of them seem to be alright right now.
Everything's holding, everything's holding pretty good, so we're kind of in, kind of in a, you know, no pun intended, involved in that. We'll see if we get, you know, if we get three, four days of weak, good solid rain. Especially if we get Sarsias apogals develop. I'll give them a call and see if they can get up and run over them this fall, but as things stand right now. You know, maybe it makes, makes the most sense to just keep that money in the bank.
No, you're not gonna improve the road by grading it this dry.
Not, not in this, not in these conditions, no. You're probably gonna make things worse.
No.
That's all I have.
Okay. Moving on, select ward concerns, does anybody have any concerns?
Uh, the only thing I have is, uh, so with the recent dam work we've had to do. Um, when I was first looking into it, there was. A part of the D E P stuff that said we had to have a dam keeper. Well, I've done a lot of research since and we don't have to, but if we don't, that means the three of us are.
So you do have to. It's the three of us or somebody else.
Yes. So, I guess we need to really think, there's, there's some things with that dam that could use some attention in the near future. Do, do we want to be, take the lead on that, or do we? I mean, I, I feel, we, we may be asked someday to open the gates for a random reason by D E P or. Mima, as they call it, don't ask me what that stands for right now.
Main Emergency Management Association. Agency, actually.
Should we have somebody there, it's just something, I, I've been thinking about, I, I think it would be good if you two thought about it.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe.
I'll read through your damned information you gave me. I have a damn information you gave me.
It'd be good to have the people affected by it be invited, the, the people that, that have camps on that pond.
Right.
They have an association, don't they, a pond association?
I don't know if it's a pond association or a road association.
I know Eric Curtis, Eric Curtis brought his presentation into us, do you remember that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I don't know.
That was part of the, the road part, I know that.
Yeah. And I, and Eric was very involved when we were out there with the dam, the sleuthway.
But.
I don't know if that's just because that's the only association they have and.
Right.
So they were just using that as their speaking point, you know? I know they would like to see the top board left in on the, it's like a ten foot six. So that there's always water running over the top of the dam. But if you go look at the top of the dam, it's very, it's eating away at, at time, you know? And, but that's about five inches of difference if you don't run that top board. So, this, I had kind of run through a few ideas in my mind, how to run that top board and still. Not hurt our dam, but I think that's something that we should have a dam keeper for, cause there are a lot of laws that go along with that, you know?
So, if that applies to that dam, does it apply to the other dams like Center Pond and?
Center Pond is actually privately owned, that is not a.
It's a non-workable dam.
Right.
Fill away.
Yeah, but basically it's a pile of rocks with a few pieces of wood crammed down in there.
Yeah, there's nothing you can do to it to do it.
So, uh, the dam, the second dam on Cotton Stream, I assume Clint Rudden owns that, correct?
I think that he made sure.
Now, the dam by number all, we may own that, I think the town.
I think number all owns it.
Well, I did too, but I thought Dan told me that he gave that back to the town somewhere along the line, so. We're gonna look into that, and then the third dam has got a big hole in it anyway, so it's, you know, really not even, doesn't even qualify as a dam.
Where's that?
Where the old mill used to be.
Oh.
You can't see it this time of year, cause the lot's too grown in, but in, when the leaves are gone, you can look out there and see. It looked like it was a beautiful stone dam at one time, but. It's been.
A little hole in it?
Yeah, yeah, I guess.
When the mill burned, I think they.
Knocked it out?
Knocked it out. There's no reason to have a dam.
There used to be a bridge back there, right, for the trail behind your place?
It's further down, it's further down from the dam.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Closer to the Scat, of course, you're right.
The only other dam I'm aware of in town would be the French's Mills, and that I don't think has been functional in many, many. Generations, although that's a fairly impressive looking dam.
Silver's Mills?
The French's Mills, there's actually the, the, would be the same road that comes out of Center Pond and goes on the main stream. That, that dam, if you go down there and you can look at it from the road, it's a fairly impressive looking concrete dam. It was built probably sometime in the eighteen hundreds, but again, I assume that's private ownership and I don't think it's functional anyway.
Yeah, and Nolan Mills is no longer a dam?
No, there's no.
There's just water runs over the road.
I guess technically I was, I had responsibility for a couple, I was EMA director in Dover, I had a couple of responsibilities for those. Flood controlled pond dams out there behind the academy, but really all I had to do was write a letter every year to. Uh, FEMA or EMA, MIMA or somebody that said, you know, there's no trees growing up through them, that they're still functional, would do their job, so.
Now, is that, is that the voice of a volunteer that's got experience, so?
You know, I, we can add this to my job description, I don't think, I mean, I gotta do a little bit of research, but I don't think this is gonna take a tremendous amount of my time. To do, so, so yeah, I could do it.
Well, thoughts for future agenda, I guess.
Right.
No rush, we don't have no dire emergency.
Yeah, as I've been explaining to the people on the end of the pond, have no rain for a month and a half and. And long sunny days with ninety degree temperatures, the evaporation is, you know, it's gonna take a lot of rain to bring that water.
I pulled my boat too easily. I stood there.
Well, I guess it's, Center Pond's as low as I think I've ever seen it.
Yeah, it was this low ten years ago.
Uh, yeah, probably.
I don't know, did you stay on the boat? Yes, yeah, this is a, there's a rock sticking out, I haven't seen it in quite a while. And you, I went down here a couple, I, I turned around and.
Yeah, danger, danger, danger.
October.
I pushed my head, you had to pull it out for a waist, for my motor in the water, just wanted to move it.
Well, it's pretty weedy over there too.
It is. Okay, no other select ward concerns? Okay, moving on to item ten, executive session, and we do have an executive session, uh, tonight. So.
Thank you, ladies.
Hey Brian, you put everything in there?
Yes, ma'am.
See you in the morning.
Yeah, like I said, I'm gonna stop and tell Timmy he went himself a bed before I come in.
Good evening. Okay, we, we have an executive session tonight. The exec, executive concession, executive session consists of personnel matters, MRS five oh one. Title, chapter thirteen, subsection four oh five, six, section A. The time is seven forty-three, I make a motion that we enter executive session.
Second.
Annabot, we are entering executive session.
Check mark.
Okay, time is eight twenty-two, we're returning from executive session. Our personnel matters have been discussed and we feel there's no need for action. Moving on.
I make a motion adjourned.
Second.
Annabot, we're adjourned.